Mr. Practical.
Yeah, for once.
It'll be on the Board of Works. Ready? Hello, everybody. Welcome. Uh, let me see here. First meeting I want to call to order tonight is the Board of Works meeting for February the 5th, two thousand and twenty-four with a roll call, Mr. Fetty.
All right, we got Board Member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
Myself.
Okay. Uh, announcements, Tommy, Brett, I don't have any announcements for this particular meeting.
I have none, Mayor.
I have none, Mayor.
All right. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, I need approval, entertain a motion to approve the January twenty-third work session.
Uh, was that the one with the council and that?
It's everybody.
So would we do that in this meeting or the council meeting?
Because the Board of Works was listed as well.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right. Second?
Second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Fetty, I'm not seeing anything.
All right.
Which one? Oh.
Got it recorded, so.
Yep.
New business. Uh, Mr. Fetty, we got the Lawrenceburg Township interlocal.
Yeah, um, that's the interlocal with the fire department and the, and the city or whatever. Uh, once again, we do that every year. It's the beginning of the year. Of course, we're going here the first of February. But, uh, it's, uh, it's payment, I think, in June and August or June and
December.
September, whatever they get, uh, two thirteen thousand dollar checks from the interlocal agreement there. So just need approval, approval on that.
Did, did anything change from this year?
No, it's been the same for several years.
Is that something that we may want to consider down the road being that we're paying a higher amount for the nine-one-one service? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking if it falls back on us. Is that a question I, we should probably ask?
Well, I think it's, I think it's probably a question for all of us. So, I mean, it's, if we want to.
Well, we obviously can. We, um, no, it makes, he makes a good point. Uh, everybody's aware that, you know, we, uh, they raised our, the nine-one-one, uh, center, our, 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 our fees for that this year, uh, and going forward. They raised them for everybody in the county.
Correct.
Uh, we, uh, certainly, uh, probably need to look at all of our interlocals and our agreements, uh, with, uh, the county and others because, you know, we have full-time fire and full-time EMS that make a lot of runs to, and I, I will talk a little bit more about, uh, during the contract for EMS services, but, um, yeah, it's, it, it, it is something that we need to take a look at some, sometime. Tommy, you're exactly right.
I mean, we have as expenses just as well as them, you know, things are not getting any cheaper as far as what we have on the, the units themselves, so.
Yeah. No.
Us to pay that we pay our, uh, employees and stuff.
Great point, and wear and hair and everything.
Yep.
So.
Just food for thought.
No, that's, that's a fair question. Very fair. Okay, any other questions? Not to entertain a motion to enter into the agreement with, uh, uh, the portion of the township, uh, with, uh, LFD Fire Protection.
So moved.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Okay, in front of you, I, I, I think we, uh, we were meant to do this the last meeting, but, uh, this is the engagement letter for the bond council for the Riverfront Development. Uh, we've already signed the, uh, engagement letter for Reedy, uh, with the accounting portion of it. Um, do you guys have a, an opportunity to read it?
I looked over, Mayor, the only thing that I would question is, under fees, I see no dollar amount. Is that something that, as we go along, they will?
Fees for when you go bond? It, it depended upon the, the size of the bond.
Okay.
And those fees are, they're a set fee, so to speak, so, uh, that'll be determined.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just an engagement letter, so they can do work on our behalf if we need them to, until this gets going.
Gotcha.
So, does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the, uh, Barnes and Thornburg, uh, engagement letter.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. All right, the next thing I wanted to put in front of you is the contract for EMS services. Questions?
Mine would be no different than last, and so, as you stated, it's something to look into some.
Uh, we met with the county.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit more involved in this one.
We met, we met with the county, uh, a week ago, two weeks ago now.
Been a couple of weeks, probably.
Mark, uh, because we had some, uh, some questions about it. And, uh, uh, if you're aware, there's, uh, a, a, a sum of money coming from the state, uh, EMS lit money, okay? We already have a public safety lit, but this is for EMS lit, and it can only go towards EMS units. Uh, the sum of money that the county is, uh, slated to get is somewhere in a neighborhood of three-point-two million, okay? And that's supposed to be dispersed among the EMS units in the county. Uh, my request to them was that we, and, and, and we asked how that money was going to get distributed. And, uh, the answer we got was they have a committee formed that is going to determine these, this criteria. We expressed, I expressed, Mark expressed, our, our concerns is that we want to be paid, uh, based upon the, uh, uh, the percentage of runs that a person, that, that an EMS unit makes. Obviously, we make the lion's share of the runs in the county, uh, and, and things. Uh, they were saying that, they weren't on the committee, but they were, they would assume that that's the way it would be done. Now, I believe that this committee is supposed to roll out what the criteria is going to be for all these EMS entities. So we won't know until they do that, uh, but we wanted to make sure we were heard at the be, at the front end of it. Uh, supposedly, uh, the money comes, starts, uh, getting doled out in latter part of March, I believe. That's what we were informed, I think it's March.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we were told, and, and, and I think one of the biggest reasons that we set this meeting up is, last year we received a hundred thousand for this contract. And, you know, we were told because of what the mayor just said right there that, you know, we're just going to go ahead and do the thirty thousand just to kind of get you started because we have all this extra money, it's going to be dispersed, uh, we were told March, but then I heard other things that it could be quite a bit later than March, so, you know.
And I think that number's thirty-six thousand.
Was it? Uh, I think it is thirty. Is it thirty-six?
Yes, that's what it is in this agreement, yes.
Okay, and that thirty-six thousand is, uh, they're actually paying that now, early, out of the general fund.
Yes.
And then they said that the remainder would be a true-up once the EMS lit money comes and that criteria is developed. So, to me, we're going to keep it, we'll, we'll keep an eye on, you know, when that criteria comes out. We, I, I'm very interested to see how they disperse that three-point-two million dollars. Uh, there was some talk that a portion of that money was going to be held back into a fund by the county, uh, out of that three-point-two. And then, know that this is, this, this is, that, this money is going to be there every year. It may not be three-point-two next year, it may be lower, maybe higher. Uh, but some portion of this money they are going to hold back into a fund for, for entities that may have to buy a new, the, uh, ambulances and stuff. Uh, my, my question to that was, uh, that's a very subjective way, I mean, this committee could say, hey, Lawrenceburg, uh, you put in for this two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to buy this EMS new, new ambulance, but you really, do you really need that money? Our answer is yes, right? Uh, but it's a very, it, I, I just, I, I, I got, I got a little bit of problem with that, and I expressed it in that meeting that, that, uh, you know, I don't like the subjectivity of it because I, I, I think that it should be done, and they should, they should, they should disperse the entire three-point-two million. That's my, my two cents. I'm not in charge of that. That's county. They'll do it the way they need to do it, but I just told them how we felt. But we'll have to sit and wait, so that's, that's what I know about this. So, uh, I would, I would, my two cents is that we would accept this thirty-six thousand and then, and I take them for their word.
Stay on top of the rest of it.
Yes.
And I see, we read it.
We will.
That is outlined in number four, what you were speaking of, and dispersing that at a later date.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. Any questions about that? I hope I explained that right. Mark was at the meeting, so.
That sounded about right.
Yep.
Did any of the other details change from this, year to year?
Just the numbers.
No, none of the details changed, right. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the contract for EMS services.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Todd, we got the CCMG twenty-twenty-three-dash-two project award.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. We, on January the twenty-sixth, uh, ten o'clock, we received four bids, contractors being Dave O'Meara, Paul Rowe Company, All-Star Paving, and DC Construction. Out of the four bids, we had only two responsive bids. The two responsive bidders were the Dave O'Meara Company and All-Star Paving. Dave O'Meara, eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. All-Star Paving, one-million, seventy-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. The bids had been certified and recommendation letter from HWC, or Engineering Group, with the low bidder being Dave O'Meara. And for the record, we do have a match required for this. It would be two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay.
Then even though we, even though two got disqualified, oh, Mayor, it was still the lowest out of all four?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Quite a bid, actually.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Questions?
I have none. Other than we're getting started.
If not, yeah.
Warm weather, stays warm weather, we'll, we'll start in.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the CCMG twenty-twenty-three-dash-two project award to Dave O'Meara, uh, company, uh, total project amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all I had, Your Honor.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I have no other new business. I do have one item of old business that, uh, wanted to bring. This was the, uh, the contract I, I'd sent you guys this morning.
Correct.
Uh, from Maxwell, uh, regarding the, uh, this is regarding the pre-construction piece of the Riverfront Development. Did you guys have a chance to read that?
Yes, I did, Mayor. And in fact, I actually went back and looked through when this all was taking place, and it looks like, uh, the, back in, what, nine, five, or twenty-three is when you brought this in front of council?
Yep.
To move forward and see where, it was actually in the paper on nine-fourteen and nine-twenty-one. Yep, advertised, and one that came back that we only have one. I do believe I questioned that Mr. Weldon on that about it being that end of that, that certain group, which he clarified that the other day that this was permissible, that they were able to do said work, so.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
I don't think I could have said it any better.
Well, I had to refresh my mind when we talked about this. I'm like, okay, got to get them wheels turning, so.
That's right. It's nice to have you back, Mr. Roulette.
Yeah, welcome back, Tommy. Okay.
I'm here for all of us.
All right, so if you, uh, no other questions? Brett, any other comments compared?
I have none, sir.
Well, I think, and what was asked of me, just to restate, I know Mr. Roulette just did, but when we, because we talked about this at the work session for last week at our retreat, but just, we did, uh, we solicited one round of RFQs, received one response, then we solicited a second round of RFQs just with the idea that maybe we wanted to see what else was out there, and we targeted that to specifically, um, riverfront engineering firms. And then we took everything, and we took our two engineers, especially the Moffett Nickel, who's the wet-side river engineer, and we said, hey, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with the construction manager in this project, because as we all know, as the project goes on, they're going to be the ones responsible for double-checking all the work, supervising the work, uh, double-checking payments, things like that, making sure the construction manager does what's in the plans that they made. And this is just a, it's a big project. It's an unusual project for us, just in the sense of the wet-side stuff's going to be on the water. Um, and the feedback we got from them was that we should actually go with the response from the first round, um, because they're, they're a hundred percent confident that that firm can handle the entire project. Um, so at the retreat, we voted at the open work session to, um, reject all the RFQ responses that came in the second round, and now we just have one response from the first round. That's the pre-construction money that you're approving now. Uh, the vote would be to approve just this dollar amount, and then authorize the mayor to sign the AIA formal construction documents once I've had a chance to review those just a little bit more. And then, um, remember, this is a CMC project, so it's broken up. Pre-construction will be a flat fee that's a percentage of the total estimated project budget, and then the construction manager will come back to us with a guaranteed maximum price, a substantial completion date, and you'll have the opportunity to vote on that, so you'll know what the, what the price is once they have their prime bids out and some subs, I would guess, uh, and know a little bit more about the project. So, sort of make sure the public knows that we opened this up to as big a group as we could, and we found the best fit, and that's who we're going with.
Questions?
I have none, Mayor.
If not, then I'd entertain a motion to enter into, uh, or give me the authority to sign the contract, but approve the, uh, contract is, uh, for the, uh, pre-construction piece of the Riverfront Development. Um, I believe the proposed fee at this point is one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, but it could be reevaluated, uh, based upon, after determination of the schematic design budget.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I have no other business for the Board of Works, so, yes.
The ambulance bid?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, real quick, I talked to Rick today, and, and he met me when we opened the bids at two o'clock. Um, I told him he didn't need to be here or anything, but, uh, back in November, November twentieth of twenty-twenty-three, the Board of Works approved the sale of the ambulance, um, so we were, we were gonna, we put it out there, and, uh, we had the bid openings today at two o'clock. I, I thought we'd receive, Rick kind of thought we'd receive a couple bids, but we only received one bid. That was from First Care in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. So, um, it would be my recommendation, I talked to Rick, and he said like that was a very fair price for it. So he said, you know, so, um.
Fully stripped.
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was going to be the next question.
Yeah, so, yeah, my question, my, my, uh, recommendation, well, Rick said his recommendation would be to accept the fifteen thousand dollars from First Care
For questions, guys?
For the two thousand twelve ambulance.
I'll entertain a motion then to accept the, uh, the bid of fifteen thousand dollars for the two thousand and twelve ambulance from First Care.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, guys. If no other business for the Board of Works, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, I want to remind everybody, we're going to probably, we're going to have to pause some time for the, during the utility board meeting for a public, additional appropriation, uh, public hearing at six-thirty, and then we will get back into the utility board meeting once that is, uh, the hearing is completed. Uh, we'll vote on the, uh, appropriation for the, uh, additional appropriations in the council meeting, though. So, everybody's aware of that, okay? Okay, um, I'd like to call to order a city Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting for February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four with a roll call, Mr. Fetty.
Right. Uh, Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Freiman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
We've got City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
We got Utility Director Billy Kennett.
Here.
We got President Kelly Malone.
Here.
Myself.
All right. Any announcements, Director?
Nope, sir.
All right. If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fetty, you going to write off some checks?
Yeah, this, it's this time of year, um, any checks that are two years or older, uh, by state statute and our code, we need to get those written off the book. Um, we know that there are some names and some different things there that technically, you know, they can still come back and get the money, but technically, those checks are no good because they're over two years old, so just need approval to get those written off.
Is that the total, eighteen oh-two fifty-three for those? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the same thing with the residential account write-offs. Once again, with our code, anything over two years old, we got to get out of the council receivables, so it's, uh, more or less cleaning up the books. Uh, those probably residential accounts that you see there, those have already been sent away to the collection agencies. Um, we're still trying to, we are still going to try to get the money from those accounts, but technically, to clean our books up and the state statute, might give permission to write, write those off as well.
Okay. Any questions? Any motion to accept?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Director Kennett, we got the sale of the VAC trailer.
Yes, sir. Uh, before we do that, when I, I had something that has come up, and we think it's best for the USB to, um, to do a motion. Um, we, we have accounting, um, in, in our accounting setup, we have, excuse me, operational funds and capital funds, and, uh, we have some money in both of those that we invested into CDs because the market is, uh, very good for that, to collect some interest on money that we had sitting in the bank. And so that's in process. We've had a lot of great success with that. We also have a meter deposit account, and, um, I looked at that account and the history of it over the last three years, and we would like to take three thousand and invest it in a CD out of that meter deposit account. Then the question came up, and they looked at the, the state statute, and we can do that, and then the question came up, uh, what do we do with the interest?
Right, and that's the part we need to figure out.
Yeah, so, um, Mark and I had talked about it, and the way we do a lot of shared things within the utilities, uh, talking about the electric, water, and sewers, uh, fifty percent go, if we're sharing between the three utilities, fifty percent goes to electric, twenty-five percent goes to water, and twenty-five percent goes to sewer. And Mark came up with the idea, he thought it would be good to be consistent with the interest, so the interest that we would earn on the hundred thousand that's invested, we would split it fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. And we think just to make sure we're covered in doing this, we'd like the board, uh, to approve a motion to do that dispersment, uh, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Questions?
On the interest.
On the interest, yeah.
On the interest.
Yeah, if we would cash it in, the hundred thousand would go back into meter deposits.
Question? If not, entertain a motion to, uh, approve the dispersment of, uh, the, any, the, the interest made off of the investment from the meter deposit money, and it would be dispersed as follows. Fifty percent of the interest would go to electric, twenty-five percent to sewer, and twenty-five percent to water. Did I phrase that correctly?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
You got a motion. Dylan, did you do that?
Tony.
Tony?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Now can we sell a VAC trailer?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, so turns out I did not.
Get us some money here.
I did not think this process through, and, and I'm going to apologize to the board, to Mayor, to Clerk, Treasurer. Um, I, I didn't have the forethought to think this through from a timing standpoint. We had, uh, put the VAC trailer on GOV deals, uh, back in September, and we had a reserve of seventy thousand, and the bid was only forty-three thousand. We brought that to the board. The board said, let's go back at a later date to see if we can get more money, asked us to try to sell it, uh, privately to different organizations, look at other ways of selling it. We've done all that, and, uh, I didn't think of the timing of this, but, uh, we put it back on GOV deals, and when it comes up, when the, when the bid expires on GOV deals, you have to take the offer or not take it. And I did not plan it according to a USB meeting to where I came to you guys for approval to sell it. So, uh, I made the decision to go ahead and sell it at sixty thousand dollars and then apologize to you guys for my lack of timing of being able to present it. Um, we had a reserve of seventy thousand. We sold it for sixty thousand, and I, I had looked at all kinds of different websites, and these VAC trailers were going anywhere from forty thousand to seventy thousand, uh, similar year. Um, ours was in really good shape, but it, uh, didn't have many hours at all, but I feel like sixty thousand was a, um, was a very good price on that, and, uh, so I sold it. So I'm throwing myself at the mercy of the board for the timing.
So you're asking for approval?
Yeah, I'm asking for approval to sell it.
Or forgiveness.
Ruble forgiveness.
Yeah.
Only thing I can say is you didn't lose money.
Yeah, that's, I think if sixty would have been the initial offer you came with, I think, probably would have moved it then, right?
Yeah.
I was going to say, it wasn't being utilized at all. It was basically sitting there.
No, it had like eighty-some hours, and those were mainly maintenance. I think it was used on one job, and it was a two thousand eighteen machine, so, but it wasn't being used, and, uh, so I say good riddance, and let's collect the sixty thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, you had made a comment when we spoke at that the first time, that we actually used a bigger VAC truck when we needed to VAC things as it is now, so.
Yeah.
It's understandable.
Questions?
Don't do it again.
For the record, let's get a motion to approve the sixty thousand for the VAC trailer.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Dylan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Liberty Theater Water Main Replacement, uh, Billy, you get two minutes on this one?
Yes, sir.
So, the, uh, we, we had in our capital plan, uh, that we put together back in two thousand twenty-one, we knew the water line in the alleyway behind Liberty Theater needed to be replaced, so it was in our capital plan. Uh, we bumped it up in our capital plan because of the Liberty Project, uh, that water main, uh, is in, uh, need of replacement. So we went out and solicited three bids, or three quotes for this work, and, uh, we got a, a quote from TNT Maintenance, um, in the price of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, for clarification, on the second page of their quote, they have lump sum price of twenty-seven thousand, eight fifty. What they did was they used this template, uh, from another project that they bid to the city of Lawrenceburg, to LMU, and that was an error on their part, leaving that lump sum price.
I liked that price better.
Twenty-seven, eight fifty.
Yeah.
I tried to get them to honor it, but, uh, so, the, uh, the price from TNT Maintenance, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred. We also received a quote from Howard Excavating, um, and their price was ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we received a price from Foley Fire Protection, um, and that amount was ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred. So our recommendation is to, uh, go with TNT Maintenance for that water main replacement. That is a six-inch water main back there, and the lump sum price is seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, Liberty Theater. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Liberty Theater Water Main Replacement at a price of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars from TNT Maintenance.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
And a quick caveat, just real quick, we, LMU's gonna do the lateral taps coming off that new line, transferring from the old line to the new line, so there will be additional dollars. The contractor is just doing the water main.
Billy, why is there that other lump sum on the next page? Is that just a...
They made a mistake.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I caught that once in his office. Trust me.
Figured you wouldn't let that slide.
Okay, it's, I'd like to pause the utility board meeting at six thirty-one and enter into the additional appropriation public hearing that was scheduled for six thirty. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to, the appropriations were published in the paper. Mr. Fetty, correct?
Yes, everything was published.
Yep.
You know, we're in a kind of a little bit different situation this year. It was, we just had a hard time getting some numbers together by the end of last year to do it, to put it in our additional appropriation in November. And we just couldn't, we couldn't quite get the numbers that we needed for the Liberty, but we finally got everything finalized. We got the exact numbers. And that was the main reason why we're doing one so early this year. We added a couple other things. If you have any questions with any of the other things, just let me know. But the main reason was to get this thing last year, but we just couldn't get the numbers together. So we got them together now, and we'd like to, well, we definitely need to get this approved, hopefully, because I'm sure we'll have some bills and stuff coming up.
Okay, there's a...
There are a couple that I think that were, a couple of numbers, like the zero seven nine...
And the zero six nine?
Six nine.
Yeah.
The council.
Yeah.
So are we doing this now, or are we gonna wait till the...
Well, we...
Are you doing it now?
Well, we need to have the discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to have the discussion for the public. I think the oh six nine is, would be, is for a small raise for council. The oh seven nine was in there by error. We found out that we can't pay Historic Preservation Committee members per statute, so that has to come out. So that would be omitted, or, yeah, from the appropriations. And I'm open for discussion on any other ones you want to talk about.
Just gonna say, the big one for me is striking oh six nine, the council stuff.
Yep.
Strike it?
Yep.
Strike it.
I agree with that.
All right.
And then again, oh seven nine as well.
Yes. Oh six nine, oh seven nine.
Yep.
All right.
Hey, actually, can I, what's the, what was the community center department one for? Do we remember?
It's for the five twenty-six plan for Richard and Tim.
Five twenty-seven.
Five twenty-seven, sorry. Whatever, five hundred something.
What is it called? Five twenty-seven or five thirty?
I don't know. You think there's something numbers? You got me confused.
I think it's five twenty-seven.
Okay.
You want me to go back to...
Well, I'm sorry.
Maybe five twenty-nine. I can go back to the...
It's the retirement plan.
Five twenty-nine is Ohio's educational...
I was gonna say, it's the retirement plan for them.
I thought it was a four fifty-seven, but...
No, it's not.
Four fifty-seven B. How's that sound, Tommy?
That sounds better.
Now you're gonna make me look it up.
I think that's what it is. Yeah. Four fifty-seven. Anyway, okay, so oh six nine, oh seven nine, when we go to vote on this in council, we will make that comment that those will be omitted. Yeah, omitted from the...
Sounds good.
The appropriation. Okay. All right. Anyone in the community, or anybody in the audience, want to speak on the... If not, I will say that we will call back to order the utility board meeting at six thirty-five P.M. So, any other new business, Mr. Kennett?
No, sir.
All righty. Let's go to old business. You got additional days of monitoring temporary sewer flow on Ludlow Hill.
Yes, sir. This is the engineering study that we are currently doing for the Ludlow Hill Sewer Main. This is from the main, from the hospital out to the end of the line. We're studying that sewer flow to see, you know, what kind of capacities we have left on that, on those sewer lines out there. Unfortunately, we have not had a significant rain event since we started, since we put these flow monitors in place.
Don't tell them that in Southern California.
Yeah. It has been tremendously dry, which is a good thing for our study because we're able to study in great detail what the exact sewer flow is. The problem that we're having is without a significant rainfall event, we've not been able to study the infiltration into the sewer lines. And that is our, one of our biggest concerns is all the infiltration that's getting into the sewer lines. It's causing some issues with maintaining the sewer flow. So what we'd like to do is, this is for a supplemental agreement to add another thirty days. Our flow monitoring ended by our existing contract at the end of the year. We would like to do another ninety days and hoping that, you know, usually we don't hope for rain like this, but we would like to have a significant rain event within this ninety-day period so that we can really get a good study for the infiltration. If we don't extend this, then the engineers will have to do some guessing based on the data that they have. So I'd like to have the approval to extend the flow monitoring for this project and take it out to the end of March, and the price for that is thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And it's for the rental of flow monitoring stations and then the data collection.
What was that price again?
Thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm sure if they waited till April or May, they'd get plenty of rain around here.
Yeah.
We got a lot of rain last week, though.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
We got quite a bit of rain.
It was spread out over a period of time. We need a significant within like an hour or two. So that's when it really shows in the capacity of that. So we need a good steady downpour for like an hour or two, where that rain was just steady over a period of like, it was light rain over three or four days.
Yep.
So it was a significant rainfall, but it wasn't in the timeframe that we needed. We need to pour buckets for about an hour, an hour or two, so we can see what it does to that system.
Maybe we can pipe some in from the west coast.
Is this the first extension for this?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we had a engineering agreement, and this is a supplement to that engineering agreement. That's the reason you see, the engineering agreement was eighty-nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. That included the flow monitoring up until the end of the year. And so the engineers are asking to keep that flow monitoring in place for an additional ninety days, and that supplemental price to the agreement is thirty-six thousand one fifty.
Billy, we, I didn't, wasn't able to pull up the original agreement. Will you just make sure it matches? Because this says Lawrenceburg Utility Board. As long as the original agreement also says Utility Board, it's fine.
Okay.
If the original might say Lawrenceburg Municipal Utilities.
Okay.
Just make sure they match, and if not, they can change it.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the additional days of monitoring at a price of thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which will go till the end of March. Correct?
Yes.
You got a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Dylan, second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item, builder's risk insurance proposal for the electric garage project?
Yes, sir. We're in the process of getting started on the electric garage office remodel project. And as a part of our responsibilities, we need to have a builder's risk insurance policy. And so this proposal is from sites agency care of Cincinnati Insurance Companies. And the premium for the builder's risk insurance policy is six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So like a motion, be able to approve this builder's risk insurance proposal.
Questions? If no questions, I entertain a motion to approve the builder's risk insurance policy at a price of two, or six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So move, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is electric garage light fixture purchase.
Yes, sir. So as part of the electric garage office remodel project, we have an existing lighting system in the garage area, and it has controls associated with it. It's a RAB lighting system. And when we met with the engineers and the architects in the pre-planning stages of the electric garage office remodel, we told them to work with RAB, who's the manufacturer, and to install compliant light fixtures so that they match up to the control system that we already have in the garage. They failed to do that, and I didn't catch it until after the bids had went out. And so what we had talked about was not only matching up the new light fixtures so that would work with the control system, but also that to keep confusion out of it, we knew exactly what light fixtures we needed and that LMU would purchase the light fixtures, and then the contract would be for the electrical contractor to install the fixtures. So what you have in front of you is a lighting quotation from EBEB Solutions, which is the RAB rep that designed the garage system. And the price for, to purchase the lighting fixtures, this is all the lighting fixtures that are needed for the electric garage office remodel. Their price is fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents. Now, Maxwell went back to the electric contractor and had them figure out if they was to buy the light fixtures that was specified in the bid documents, how much that price would be, and that was, that would be a deduct from Stapleton Electric in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So this is just for the purchase of the lighting equipment that was specified in the bid documents. So our net price for the lighting package, and just light fixtures only, is five thousand eight hundred... It's a five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollar difference from the bid document price with that. Did I explain that right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna pay, if you approve it, we'll pay EBEB Solutions the fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents to buy the lighting fixtures and the controls. The controls come already pre-mounted from RAB in these light fixtures. And then we'll get a deduct of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on the GMP, and then the electrical contractor will install the lighting. And we have put the engineer on notice that if it goes over the GMP price, we are gonna hold them accountable for the difference of five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-one cents.
Questions?
The only question I have, and I probably should ask Billy this prior to the meeting, do we only need to get one quote because this is like a sole source, or...
These guys did the design with the RAB rep, so that's a reason we just solicited the one. They did the...
So it's permissible is what they said?
Yeah, they did the lighting for the garage itself, and so this is just an extension of that system.
They were in the original bid.
Okay.
The price just went up, so if they would have kept their signature, then we would have used them anyway. So we're using the same company that they were gonna buy from. We're just paying more. So it's outside of the contract that we're really doing it.
Good question.
Still through that. That is a good question.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the lighting fixtures from EBEB Solutions at a price tag of fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents for the utility garage.
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about the budgeting for furnishing electric garage office?
Yeah, so this is something that we wanted to bring in front of you for your approval as far as a budget for furnishing the electric garage. This is for desks, chairs, conference tables, filing cabinets, whiteboards, stove, microwave, coffee maker, all the things we need to furnish. Eric went through, and we sat down together, and what do we need in each one of the spaces? And, you know, we came up with a, with pricing of eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five. There may be a few other things that we need that we didn't think through that was on here. So I would ask that you allow us a budget of twenty thousand dollars to furnish the electric garage, the office, once that project is finished.
I just got a question. Twenty, twenty chairs? You really think you're gonna have twenty people over at some time?
Well, so that's for the, what they're doing, we have a conference room.
Yeah.
And then we have like, like they have the fire department, those work tables with the chairs around there. So it's furnishing both areas.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it. Okay.
What about those five lazy boys in there?
I missed them.
In the hot tub. In the hot tub.
Come on, man.
What's a sauna?
It's, don't beat Mr. Kennett up too bad.
This is kind of like the chicken down there fried.
Yes.
You guys are messing with me. You noticed I had to put my glasses on and look at that?
Revenge, because you got to eat the chicken. I was jealous. Me and Larry were jealous.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, since you've got a price here? That we, if I ask, we asked for approval for the eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five.
Okay.
If you go over that, you're gonna have to take it out of like...
Your paycheck.
Your, yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, I'm trying somebody else. No, but take it out of something, you know, if, I don't, you know, have rainy day in LMU, but...
Yeah.
Take it out of something else, too.
Okay.
And then you can always adjust it or come back to the USB.
That sounds good, and we will put this in our budget, you know, when we complete the budget.
Okay. Questions, guys?
Have none, Mayor.
All right. If not, I entertain a motion to approve budget for furnishing electric garage office at a total of eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Mislenious.
I'll make that motion.
How about a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eric's gonna get used to this.
Covers. They're covering.
Eric's gonna get used to some of this, didn't he?
Electric Garage Update, Eric.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to keep you informed of what's going on with the electric garage office project. Things will start moving very quickly here, and they have been from a paperwork standpoint. They're actually gonna start the demo work Wednesday, which is ahead of schedule, so we're excited about that. There are some changes that have been made since we signed the original GMP. The walls, the configuration of the walls, we adjusted those a little bit, and there were some savings by doing that. Instead of having some jogs in the walls, we made them straighter than what the architect had designed. So there was a deduct of seven dollars and thirteen cents when it was all said and done for all of those changes. They had carpet in there, and we didn't catch that before the bid documents went out. We took the carpet out of there, and it's gonna be just a sealed concrete with the, with the tire that they're wearing, boots and clothes and muddy. We didn't think carpet was a good idea, too. We took that out, and so there's a deduct of five thousand... And so there's a deduct of $5,800 for that. Uh, we've already...
Shoes off before they enter.
Yeah. Um, we, we already talked about the lighting. There's a deduct for $8,750 from the lighting contractor for that. One of the big things that we're working through right now, and they don't have the money figured out on this, um, eh, the concrete is sloped, and the architects and engineers missed that when they did the design work. And, um, so what they've gotta do is tear out some additional concrete and then, uh, re-pour it. And so we're in the process, Maxwell's in the process right now of figuring out what the, wha- wha- what that is gonna cost us to do that. And we again have put the engineer on notice that whatever this difference comes up, if we go over the GMP, we're coming back after the architect and engineer for, for missing this. So I just wanted to keep you informed, uh, everything else. Maxwell's done a great job staying on top of it. They actually caught this. Uh, we would've been in trouble had we been actually doing construction. They caught it before we even started the demo, so, uh, really appreciate what they're doing and how they're doing it, uh, with that. So things are progressing very nicely on that project, and we look forward to them starting the jackhammer on Wednesday.
Questions? Thanks, Billy. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, approve the claims.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified?
I'll make that motion.
Dylan, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to hold order. The City of Lawrenceburg Council Meeting for February the 5th, 2024. All rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mayor, Mr. Fettie.
All right, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tom Rowlett.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
We got City Attorney Delwell.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, announcements, board reports, streets, alleys, and curbs in the downtown area, Mr. Abbott.
Everything is good.
Thank you, sir. Streets, alleys, and curbs, Ludlow Hill area, Mr. Fryman.
All good, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Finance Department, Mr. Bondurant.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Parks and playgrounds, Mr. Little.
Parks have been busy the last couple of days with the nice weather.
I drove by again today and it's arch, or, yeah, Arch Street was packed.
Yeah.
Yep. It's good, though. Okay, uh, Fire Department, Mr. Rowlett.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Oh, that was good timing. Okay, um, I just got a couple of things. I wanna invite everyone, uh, to the State of the City address on February 16th, which is a, a week from this Friday. Wow.
Quick, isn't it?
Yeah. Uh, that'll be at, uh, 1 o'clock at the Event Center. Uh, that will be livestreamed as well. Uh, I wanna congratulate, uh, uh, ex-principal at Lawrenceburg High School, Mr. Bill Snyder, on representing Lawrenceburg very well on The Price is Right, um, winning the Showcase Showdown, which, uh, tell you what, we're putting him right up there with everybody else, Mason Paris and everybody, right? I mean, he just...
We're gonna put him on the sign coming in.
Oh, we may have to. Congratulations. Come on down, Bill.
He almost hit the double.
Come on down, Bill.
A hundred bucks away from hitting the double showcase.
Yes, he was.
That cost him from getting on.
I think he only overbid 300 and some odd dollars.
Yeah, I think he had to be within 250, and he was like a 330 or 340.
How about if we do his dance on?
I was gonna say, started to do dance.
On the board?
They couldn't have handpicked a better contestant than Mr. Fettie.
No, they could not. No, they couldn't have. He...
They could not.
He's got that kind of energy, doesn't he?
Yes, he does.
Congratulations to him and Missy.
We're gonna get you on Will Fortune now.
Yeah, I know. And I'm waiting. I got two months to wait, but we'll see. Uh, one other thing I'd like to make everybody aware of, uh, uh, Mr. Abbott's sister passed away this past week unexpectedly. Uh, Lisa was a classmate of mine, so I ask for everybody to keep them in your prayers. And then, uh, while we were at the retreat, uh, Mr. Little's fiance's grandmother passed away as well. So, uh, uh, keep them in your prayer as, as well. I'd like to go ahead. Uh, anybody got anything, any other announcements? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then also I need approval for the January 23rd work session.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new business, additional appropriation, uh, number one, right, Mr. Fettie?
Number one, yes. Number one.
Okay, uh, I'd like to approve ordinance number 1 dash 2024 with the omitting of, uh, number 069 in the amount of $10,900 and the omitting of, uh, 079 in a number, amount of $3,600. And I would ask that we approve this, uh, upon a unanimous decision on, on the first reading, if, if so, uh, if it warrants it. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Brett?
So moved, yep.
Second?
I'll second it then, Mayor.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For the record, it's 457B.
Oh.
He was right. He was right. He was right. All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Mayor. All right, uh, Mr. Fettie, you got some cancellation of warrants?
Uh, just like with utilities, uh, we got the city, uh, checks that are over two years old, so I'd like to get approved right there.
I thought this was a warrant for Lenny's arrest.
Anything's possible, Mayor.
I don't. Any questions about the warrants? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the cancellation.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I am excited to introduce our next gentleman, uh, Mr. Luke Addington. If you could come up to the podium. I've been working with Luke, uh, his scout leader called and said, hey, I got a, a young man that's, uh, trying to finish up his Eagle Scout, uh, uh, achievement. And what an achievement it is. I know in the nine years I've been the mayor, uh, I've got to go and celebrate with, I think, four different young men that have become Eagle Scouts. Uh, one of my best friends in, in, in high school, uh, became an Eagle Scout, and I know how much work it, it takes. And, uh, Luke came to us, and one of the last things they have to do is a, uh, sort of a, uh, a public service project. And Luke will correct me if I'm speaking out of turn. But, uh, I'm gonna let Luke, uh, Luke came in to me, and, uh, he has a, uh, a project that I think you guys will agree with, uh, because I know I do. And, uh, I, he, he, and I'm gonna let Luke go ahead and explain it, and then, uh, and then, uh, we'll, we can talk more in depth about it. Go ahead, Luke.
Well, hi, my name is Luke Angton, and, um, what I'm here for is a proposal of, um, a beautification project for George Street Park. Um, as you all are, all are aware, George Street Park is, um, right down by VP, just right, um, past it. It's a, a very, very used park that, um, all the residents I've seen around there, live around there, um, really enjoy, something that was redone, I believe, in 2011. Um, sadly, however, that there's some aspects of the park that me and some residents that I've, um, spoke with around there have seen, just need improvements upon. Um, this project, however, is nothing of destroying of anything that was previously done, just improvements upon. Um, I'm not asking for any, um, destruction or any, um, moving forward with the project of knowing cost and all that. This co- um, all the cost and things like that will be discussed between both parties of, um, City Council and myself and other parties involved. There's many, um, different aspects of the park that, um, that can be chused upon, that would you like to approve upon, with not. Some that have caught to my attention or to people that I've talked to is, um, lighting of the park. It's only lit up by the lights from the highway, so there's been some activity there that...
Not good activity.
Not good. Um, if you're not aware, or may be aware, this park does get pretty trashed a lot, mostly due to some activity there that happens. Um, and something that I've seen there is that there's not really any trashcans or any, um, dog waste is, this, um, disposal. And things like that. Um, the bathroom there just needs a little bit of work. Sometimes it's on, sometimes it's off. Um, but things like that, um, that just, some residents, some residents and me have seen. There's also one part of the park that I've seen that actually was caught to, brung to my attention from a resident around there, that there, underneath the basketball hoop, there is some concrete that is misshaped and turned into some, somewhat of a spike.
Like a trip hazard and, yeah.
And she's, the resident I spoke to has seen people get hurt on it, so that's something I would like to be brought attention to. But this is just a proposal to start on the project and work on, uh, details.
I would tell you, I, I bet with Luke three or four times now. We've met, uh, and he, he's got, he, he's done some interviews with people around there, uh, and, and, and the things he's talking about came from those interviews, but also his, his, you know, um, visiting the, the park as well. Uh, I told him that George Street had, really, is one of the parks that we have not upgraded.
Yeah, well, it was on our agenda to do when we got down to our streets, so, and he's right about the lighting. Lighting, lighting is one of the biggest complaints I hear from everybody.
Well, and, and, yeah, you're right. And, uh, so what, what this project's gonna do, Luke is gonna head up the project. Uh, I'm gonna put him in touch with, with Brad and, and Roger at, at the city. Uh, but Luke is the, sort of the contractor on this project, and, and, uh, we're gonna help him get done the things that he needs to get done. Um, and then, you know, come back to us and, when it's done, and then he's gonna, we're gonna give him credit for making sure that he got this completed.
Luke, if you would like, you can hold me out. I have some names of a few residents over there that are very interested in that park and helping to get it updated. I might wanna speak to them. Probably have already spoke to a few of them, but...
No, it would be great, too, if they wanna, if they wanna volunteer to help, too. And, but we, uh, you know, we've got people that we can commit to help at the city, and, uh, this group, I know, you know, is all about making sure our parks are kept up to date and, uh, and upgraded wherever we can. And, and I'm, I'm thrilled that you came to, I'm glad you came to me with that project, and now you're rolling it out to, to these guys. And they're the decision makers, and they'll, you know, they're gonna give you the okay or not, and, uh, but, uh, they're, they'll be, they'll be there to support you. Any questions for Luke, guys?
No, thank you for coming forward.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Great job.
I get a...
You got a blank check, Luke.
Approve Luke's project?
I'll make that motion.
How about a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Luke. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, man.
With any help, let me know.
Very nice job, Luke.
Good deal. All right. Next item on the agenda, ALS contribution. This is something we do every year. Uh, Logan Lawrence's ALS Car Show, uh, we're usually the, one of the main, main sponsors. Uh, we, uh, usually contribute, uh, $5,000 sponsorship for this, and that's what I'm asking for tonight on his behalf. Questions?
I have none, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
How about a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. You see the donation committee recommendations. Looks like $500 towards the Easter egg, uh, event the Arch Street Gang's putting together. Um, any questions regarding that? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the donation request.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? Dylan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, board appointments. Uh, you'll see in your packet, it's, uh, the final, final draft of all the board appointments. Uh, I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look at that. Um, it looks accurate to me. I just wanted to get a, a final okay from you guys on that, um, going forward. Uh, ain't, ain't, any difference, uh, see anything that's not right?
I hadn't, I haven't seen it here yet. Is Mr. Rowlett on the sewer board?
Uh, he's a, he's my proxy.
He's what now?
He's my proxy.
Not everybody can be Lenny's proxy.
That's right. That's very...
Hard, hard, hard act to follow, right? Okay, if I, uh, if I can, then if you guys are okay with it, I would entertain a motion to approve that page of appointments.
That's so moved, Mayor.
How about a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What I gave you tonight, uh, was it, uh, I think, believe, your guys' request to get the three quotes that Bryson came back with. Ludlow Hill, uh, up at the, uh, Pee Wee Football Field, uh, the sound is horrible up there. Uh, if you remember, we replaced the, uh, uh, the sound system down at the Todd Creech Park, uh, both ballfields, uh, a year ago. And, uh, the football field is in desperate need of the same thing. I asked him to go out and get three quotes. Uh, the response that, uh, and, and Bryson apologized for not being here tonight. He was meeting with a realtor. He's trying to actually move closer to Lawrenceburg. But, uh, there's three, you got three quotes, uh, one from Clear Sound, uh, one from...
ICB.
ICB.
And then Gravity.
Yeah, Gravity. Okay, uh, the notes that he gave me, ICB did not come back with a quote. Uh, so you guys know, uh, Gravity was not quoted to the spec. Gravity and Clear Sound both did meet him down there, and he went over it step by step what he was looking for. Uh, and he, he said his recommendation would be Clear Sound. And he said it for, you know, a lot of questions about it. He's okay if we table it and, till he can be here to answer the questions, but, uh...
He talked about it.
He did.
Pretty much, I'm sure.
Yeah.
What's, what's the number on the third page of the ICB packet?
Yeah, they did have one of, like, 14.
Yeah. It seems to me like, maybe there were, maybe it was an unresponsive quote?
No, he, no, this was for, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, this was from when he, they quoted the, uh, baseball field.
Oh.
I believe.
Okay.
You see, it says field number two near US 50?
Oh, I missed that. Yes, you see that.
So this is an old, this is an old quote.
Yeah, but they did, he said it, they did not quote the, or, nor did they come in person to meet with him.
Huh.
Uh, anyway, uh, feelings, comments?
Did Clear Sound do the, the ballfields down here as well?
They did.
That was long overdue. Made a big difference.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Yeah, it did.
Ludlow Hill's right behind it. I don't know if you spend any Saturdays up there during Pee Wee Football, but it's difficult.
The only question I would have with Mayor is, uh, just coming at you, IT's budget or parks?
Well, I'd be coming out of parks. Yeah, I'd come out of parks.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, sir. Any other questions? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the Clear Sound, uh, quote of $8,673.76 for the, uh, Pee Wee Football Field up on Ludlow Hill Park.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Yes, thank you.
You guys are good work for a word.
Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Guys, I don't have any, uh, old business. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir?
Scott McLean, and I think I mentioned this to the mayor, but the advertising you guys are doing on Channel 12, I believe, this Channel 12 is working. And I get, I got someone the other day from Loveland, Ohio, which is, you know, other side of Cincinnati, but they, they said to me... side of Cincinnati, but they, they said to me, they saw it three times, and they said, we gotta go. And, but there's, people came from Kentucky, so it's good, keep it up. We, we appreciate, you know, people here, but we also appreciate come, people coming in, so, thank you.
Well, and I, I can, if I can have a minute, say, the way we determine where our marketing dollars go is based upon feedback. You know, when people come up and they say, hey, we saw the, the commercial on Channel twelve, or hey, we saw, you know, your post on social media, or hey, we saw your, your post on WLW, or wherever the Cincinnati Reds banner, everybody post, every time somebody goes to Cincinnati Reds game and they see, think Lawrenceburg dot com across the, the LED lights, I get a picture sent to me while I'm sitting at home. But anyway, that's, thanks for the kind words, Scott, that's, that's good, good information. Any other comments? Is Lee doing okay?
I haven't heard anything bad about her, she all right?
Okay, her back was hurting today, so.
Okay.
Tell her we missed her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need, also, need a motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Second?